All right, it's seven o'clock. We have a meeting in order. We did the pledge earlier, so we'll just go into a roll call. Russell Meeks?
Yes.
Don Severino?
Present.
Therese Granger present, Zim Pagent?
Present.
Okay. So first off, I'd like to introduce our new attorney, Madam Logan. Yay, we have determined the names. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you for having me.
Sorry to have somebody.
Yes. All right, the first thing we have is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Motion.
All right, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Agenda approved. The next thing we have is to approve the bills. Do I hear a motion to approve the bills?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
All right. I have a motion to pay the bills. Do we have a second to pay the bills?
It's a motion. When we paid them, remember? Now that we're the third, we paid them on the tenth of July. And I gave everybody a list of what was paid.
Okay.
So we don't see a motion, the bills are paid.
All right. Then we'll go right to the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes that were amended from October 10th. And then we have the minutes from November 14th. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Okay, with the October minutes, there were some errors in them.
Yeah, and she amended them.
And that's why they thought we were going to amend them.
Yes, she did send out an amendment.
Now, how it goes, if once you made the minutes, then you should amend those minutes. But what happened, you revised the whole thing. Was it just a whole other set of minutes?
No, I kept the same one. I just made a note where you said no, I put no response. Because I did see you raise your hand, and I didn't hear you say yes. That was it. So where you're saying I said no, you and Russell said no. If Russell said no, no response from you.
Well, you know, the determination of whether the A's and the M's were right there, you should have known.
I know.
So you're saying there was four votes, and it was a missing vote.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
You should have caught that right away, because...
There it is.
I was here. If that was the case, you should remind me that if I didn't vote, that I would have to fill out a special form.
Don, what do you think about that?
I'm here now.
Pardon?
I'm here now.
Good. And also, okay, like you say, you didn't change. You didn't change that it's still marked down as identifying photo, or I voted this, or I voted that. Something just...
You can do two things. How about not respond?
The minutes are supposed to reflect what happened.
That the other minute said.
Now, so apparently, they didn't really reflect that.
And then, no response is what you had.
But there was a response.
But it was neither recorded nor was it seen. Nothing. You didn't say anything, so it's no response.
I did say aye. And I know I did, and I heard it on the record. So, you know, that's your stance. That's your stance. I have one stand also.
So do I hear a motion to approve these minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, do I have a second? To approve the minutes?
That's the amended version?
Yes.
Correct. All right. All in favor, say aye. Don, were you in favor or opposed?
I would want in favor of the minutes that didn't reflect what I...
Okay, so Don opposed. Minutes are approved. Do you want to separate the votes for the other one, or is it all together?
The two, um... She asked for the amended for last minutes.
Yeah.
Did everyone understand that? That was for the amended minutes and for last minutes.
Was everyone good with November's minutes?
Uh, I think I had...
Are you opposed to that as well?
Fairly. I don't have a good one, I see. Fine.
Are you in my favor, because it's probably behind all the financials? Is that a lot going on?
No, it's only something bigger.
Is there one to five seats underneath your envelope?
It's embarrassing. Some what? I put a few things that go to state or to paper books and that is... Okay, apparently, it's not that important. Seems like... All right, I'm done. My bad. All right, I did have a...
You're gonna oppose for the November, is what you're saying?
No, no, I'm done. I'm not opposed to that. Even though I know there was something that was not liked, it could have been amended tonight, but without having to, you know, throw back. But we can, we can use one.
You were good with those, Russell? The November? All right.
Okay, here's the question.
So just to be clear, you put one motion and a second for a vote for both October and November.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. It was just a procedural thing more than a...
No problem. All right, moving forward, we have the public participation. Members of the public have three minutes to speak to their counsel on the topic. There are some forms if anybody wanted to fill it out, if anybody had a comment. Did anybody have a comment this evening? Did you pull out or are you putting in a box? It's like a little eleven box. All right. Our first comment is from Jeremy Hill. Go ahead.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the residents of Otter Creek as they represented the town as a whole, not only to Levy County, but honestly to the world. And I saw individuals such as Madam Mayor Therese directing traffic out in floodrains with thousands and thousands of people backed up. Vice Mayor Zim out and caring for people as well. Doug and Belinda with superhuman strength as thousands of children jumped up on their laps and told them what they wanted for Christmas. And Belinda's smile, and Doug's ho, 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 and them holding hands for hours upon hours upon hours. And Edley serving sacrificially for hours and hours. And Gail, Gail, for seven plus hours, standing in the same spot with taking no break. What an example for her granddaughter who was serving as well. I gotta say that I was so impressed as there were over 50 volunteers at Christmas in the creek, and half of those were, those were residents of Otter Creek. Including Brett as well, directing traffic in the rain. And there's many others that aren't here tonight. But I just, I want to encourage the residents of Otter Creek that I think you've encouraged not only Levy County. I think your encouragement goes forward throughout the world. They've seen it, and the world cares about you as well. So I just want to share my appreciation and honestly brag on you a little bit. I can't believe what I saw happen as the town came together, honestly, for the first time, I feel like, since I've lived here in Otter Creek. And it was an amazing, amazing experience to see all that Christmas joy. So thank you. And Joyce was there too, very much so. Joyce was foundational in that, foundational.
It was pretty amazing, I have to say, being with the weather, the way it was. The kids were so excited, and none of them were complaining. It's just an amazing example of what can happen when people come together, because we are better together. So it would be nice in the future if more of that happened, and just to see all the love from all over the country for this small little town. And I just hope to see that continue.
And saying, man, I think it's a plague, because things are wet and cold, and their wives cold. You buckle up, your kids ain't complaining. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it was amazing to see such well behaved children in such conditions. I couldn't believe it, but that's what it's all about, really.
Jeremy, outside of the money that you spent on the toys from Five Below, how many were donated dollar value?
Oh, there was over $100,000 of toys.
Isn't that incredible? Those are people that donated outside the town, and now no dog in the family.
Amazing.
That's amazing.
I hope it continues. And I think we got one.
Tax write-off.
We do. We have one from Mr. Doug Standrich.
My complaint is see if we can get the county to fix the drainage in front of the water plant and my property and the city park. It caused much flooding like we got. I get every bit of drainage now from over the last quite a few years. See if they can move the drainpipes across the road. Well, that will be highly appreciated if you please agree with me.
This was a very, a very abnormal storm that he had.
And no matter what I'm saying, the drainpipe just didn't...
Right. The whole system is definitely overwhelmed through just rigorous times. And unfortunately, there's a lot of things here that we can't require the county to say.
Yeah, we can definitely put in some calls. Want to get our clerk on that. All right, did anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay. We don't have any old business. And our new business is, did you ask them?
Um, yes, and pardon. Russell, I need to get from you the last four minutes from your reporters, please, sir. Since you haven't given me your current update.
Okay.
Not normal business, but...
We didn't have...
Speaking of the recorder, because of these discrepancies in the minutes, and what really happens here, I would like to say that we...
We have, now that there's cell phones, and it's being recorded right now on the cellphone.
Your phone?
No, the town, the town hall cellphone.
And that's gonna be standard. Okay, is it gonna be transferred to me?
Yes, exactly. It will be transferred to the desktop, as well as it will be uploaded to the Google Vault, as well as to mobiles. So we will have it in three different places.
Excellent, much appreciated.
Yeah. Trying to make improvements as we go along. All right, anything else? Okay, we'll go on to new business, which is filling the vacant council seat. As you see, there was two letters of interest that were put in.
Okay, there were two letters put in, but that doesn't disqualify anybody else who'd be nominated.
Well, the procedure is to put in a letter of interest, and they had until December 15th to do so.
But that can't be a requirement. You certainly, we can ask for it, but that means that everybody else that didn't put in that by December 15th, they're not eligible to be nominated?
I mean, I think, I don't know that that's a charter requirement, but I think that was the town's process for selecting someone. And it was posted, and I mean, that was the response, was to submit a letter of interest.
Yes. Uh, no, I don't think it's in the charter.
No, I disagree with you.
Okay, so does that mean everybody else is not able to be nominated?
No, I don't think she does.
But when do we have a cutoff?
Well, I mean, I think what he's suggesting is you already had a cutoff for your letters of interest. And obviously, someone who is interested, you would think would submit a letter of interest. But that being said, I don't think there's a prohibition, outright prohibition on nominating someone that did not put in a letter of interest.
So you're gonna do it today?
Again, when they think they're interested, they will be here and/or express their interest.
Right.
So we have this until next month, we say?
No, I don't think so. I think you have your letters of interest, and if he's suggesting there's someone else, I think it's up for consideration.
To make a motion?
Okay.
Now, I make a motion that we perform this amendment. Question. He was asked, and she ran in the last election.
All right, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Do nominations have to be seconds? I don't think you have to have a second. Because you certainly, the second was then, was nominated.
All right.
I mean, it's a requirement, fine.
All in favor?
It can be consistent.
All in favor of Lynette Preston?
Uh, aye.
All right. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye?
I make a motion to be, with Carl Hughes.
All right, all in favor of Carl Hughes?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
All right. The seats are taken. All right, and the next thing we have on the agenda is the notice of election. So Otter Creek has three council seats that will be coming up. The qualifying dates for the seats are January 22nd, 12:00 p.m., through January 26th, 12:00 p.m. The election date is April 2nd, 2024. The books close March 4th for the April 2nd, 2024 election.
I question that pre-seed. Because you're including me in that. You assigned me a one-year term, and you can't do that? You don't have the charter to do that? I'll mention the fact that if you look in the charter, it specifically says that whoever was appointed is subject to that. I'd like a legal opinion on that from you and from the Attorney General and the Division of Elections if we need it. I don't know if you're familiar with the total factory. There was a three-way tie.
I don't, I don't.
It was a three-way tie.
Okay.
And the way the elections are, one year, three people are, and then the other one is two.
Sure.
And because of a resignation, this election cycle, we had to replace four people there. Okay, so that means to keep up the two-year, three-year cycle, one of those people would have to serve one term.
When they ran the election, they didn't run it correctly, and didn't list one of the seats as a one-year term, and that's why there was the confusion. And they weren't proactive on the situation.
And so normally, it's done by some random, you know, some random way. This time, they didn't do it, and the mayor seemed to think that she could just pick someone to do that. So since there was a resignation this term, to me, that would negate having to have a person serve one year, since they were all duly elected. And that was, so this election cycle will be going back to the two-three. Just, you know, coming up, there will be two seats available. And that's what we were trying, that was the whole...
When I asked him, he said...
To do that one-year term was to get back to a three-two cycle.
If we had an election coming up with a reservation, we, the person who filled it even to not is only going to do it until April, whereupon they have to go to an election.
Yes, but that doesn't exist here.
It does, because at the time that she was still in office, we still had, we still had your two seats coming up in April.
It was the same standards as it was previous election.
It was the same, can I finish?
It was the same standards as then, but the elections took place. The election went and took place, and there was no regards of a appointed seat and not appointed seat, or no other seats. It was just three people or four people ran for four seats. And they didn't clarify, they should have clarified, when they did the listing for the positions to run, was one of them was a one-year term. They did not specify.
And that was the person that was appointed.
It was not specified in the election, it wasn't specified in the election.
Again, the charts, they did not...
Well, the clerk didn't label it during the election, so it was done improperly.
They never expected a three-way tie.
The three-way tie has nothing to do with it. It wasn't advertised correctly as being a one-year term, which is the way it should be, which is the way it's gonna be in this election when there's no seats.
And I will do that. I mean, obviously, it suggests in an even year, which we're coming into, two people are elected, you have a vacancy. So I absolutely agree with Ms. Belinda that when you have a vacancy, and that seat is filled by the council, that individual is subject to election in the next upcoming election. So for that reason, you should have three people up for election in this even-numbered year. But I understand what you're saying.
It was three last year.
I understand, and I understand what you're saying. And I, obviously, I don't know the history, and I'll look into it. I'm just saying, as far as where we sit currently, three people will be up for election in 2024. The vacancy, and then the two that should be up in even-numbered year.
Okay, so how are we going to resolve the three-way tie?
That's, we'll have to look into that.
She has to look into it.
I'll have to look into that. I mean, I can't, I can't answer that, sitting here not knowing what seat was what.
I understand 100%. But the problem is, January is the qualifying time.
Understood.
So that's gonna cause a, uh, I don't know.
Sure.
If we don't resolve it soon.
We will get it resolved soon.
Okay.
All right. So now, moving on to the department reports. Do we have anything for administration?
Our council meeting in January will be one week prior to this cut.
Correct.
Date.
As far as the administration part, each of you got a financial statement from every department. That is a true reflection of everything that's going on in those departments. We got all of the, all the stuff corrected, and we are finished with our 2023 audit.
Yes.
So that means that we finished our fiscal year in September, the end of September. And by the end of this month, we should finish, we'll upload everything to the general record in front of the audit. It'll be done. So with the 2023.
That's good.
That's great, John.
Good job.
You, Belinda?
Good job.
It's awesome. You're shaking your head over there.
Because I don't see how that has anything to do with the election coming up.
We're done with that. We're done with the government.
We left the...
Yeah.
Were you not listening?
I tried to listen, but hearing was there. That's what going to war does to people. I came back with just hearing loss. I didn't come, I came back. A lot of people did not come back. Well, I'm sorry if you happened to be there because of my...
Now, where are your names?
I don't apologize. I accept that they're not necessary.
We are glad to return and come back.
Say thank you for your service. And we, no, well, he, he thanked us all.
We thank all veterans for their service.
And everybody's blood. Oh, it's for the water. After asking you about it.
Okay. Was there anything for the water? Any updates on the water?
We did get our grant, our permit back from D E P. And we are, equipment should be coming in first week of January, and trying to set up, get it online, and spend another January.
That's good. Anything else for maintenance or public safety or anything? I don't think so. As you've seen, Richard's been hard at work painting the town hall and taking down the ceiling, and new lighting has been put up. The lines, so Richard's been working hard. I mean, thank Richard for that. Yeah.
I had to help.
All right, and announcements. We have the children's food table every other Friday at 1:00, December 22nd, and then January 5th and January 19th. You can still sign up for the email for your water bills. You'll get your bills faster. If you want to sign up, just see Belinda during town hall hours, and she can put you on the list. And the next Waukesha Water and Wastewater Co-op meeting will be January 17th. I don't believe they've announced the location yet, so stay tuned for that. It'll be posted up on the boards when it has been figured out. All right, and then we're moving on to public comments. The members of the public have three minutes to comment on items or issues discussed at this meeting. Does anybody have any comments or questions for us tonight? All right. And I just wanted to tell everybody to have a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Spend time with your family and friends and get along. Does anybody else have anything?
They said to have passed, we had a party meeting, I failed to mention something. Well, I'm trying to do it above a comment, and I guess it doesn't carry the same weight. But we didn't, we voted on the bill and the minutes, et cetera, but we didn't vote on the financial reports themselves. That's also a requirement.
Obviously, it's in the agenda.
Well, maybe it should be on the agenda, because what are the financial reports for? It's sort of, you know, can be approved or disapproved. Paying the bills is one thing, and approving the financial reports is another thing.
Okay. Well, you've never been hit with them.
You only got it here and there before, so it was never on.
I'm sorry, Belinda. Don, you can go back in there and look at all the records, and there are plenty of them there.
Okay. I'd be more than happy to go over if you're gender-wise. I'll see you tomorrow in my office, and we'll double say hello for it, okay?
That's a possibility.
But in the main, it...
Don, you don't think the financial report should be voted on? Should be a, maybe done or not?
If it needs to be, just thank the budget.
I've been down for 20 years, we're always voting on. I don't think a vote is gonna change the result. I don't think a vote on the reports is gonna change the actual report. I think the report is accurate, and it's got some standing.
Is that normal for it to be voted on?
I'm gonna say no. When I say that, I mean, you budget, and so obviously, that is, that is significant function of this council. And so certainly, you look at it along the way to make sure it's, you know, it matches up with your allotted budget. But I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're approving or disapproving by way of a financial report, separate department budget.
We get to think it's financial reporting, expenditures, expenses, bills, checks that are written, like a check registry, that sort of thing. We should be able to vote for it, and see what happens. What happened in the last 30 days, what happened in the fiscal year.
Are you not happy with what you were provided this time?
Well, it's not complete, I see.
How is it not complete?
Well, there's no check registry, there's a...
Everything's in that office right there, and you're welcome to come in, eat time, and do it during the daytime. Because our meetings, our meetings aren't designed for us to sit here and bicker and tinker about useful details that just don't apply.
But you're supposed to approve minutes and do approve financial reports?
Yes, that's it. The minutes is part of the work.
Why didn't you mind if you approved the financial? Why didn't you, why don't you approve the financial reports?
Well, what are you talking about, you don't approve them, it's, listen, let me ask you this, there again, let's go back. If they were, if the financial reports were given to you or accurate, why would you miss out the ARCA? Tell me that, why would you miss out the ARCA? The ARCA was never put in the financial statements.
This is what we normally are supposed to get. You know, just like.
I don't need to make a doubt, I saw, I saw Gil's book, not every, not had it in there.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm sorry, but um yes, tomorrow.
My actual reports, you can come in and address it.
Was it on the agenda?
Every meeting I said, and you complained that you never got anything.
Was it on the agenda?
Our agenda?
Yeah, you're saying it should have been on the agenda, was it?
Well, we haven't done it for how long? Okay, for the last six months, you've been paying.
No, you have complained about this for the last five years that I've been coming, isn't it?
No, you're, this is now.
No, I, every month, I thought you'd complain about this.
I come to do, I come to do uh tours on these things, probably three or four years worth of these.
As it stands, it's not really an official part of the meeting. If you have some issue with it, you can come in and address it during the day.
This is the place for bringing issues up.
If there is an issue, yes.
Well, there's certainly.
Okay, so we discussed that that is not practice, is there anything else anybody has questions or comments about?
Twenty something years and now you're saying, no, we don't need that. Just like the recorder, she said, no, we don't want, now six months later.
Okay, well, there's nothing that makes you happy, was there anything else?
Be big happy.
All right, Richard, thank you everybody for coming, have a good evening, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. Merry Christmas, George Morris, I like that. Me too.
Yes, ma'am. I'm recording, um I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
At Monday's meeting, special meeting, you made a comment.
What's that?
Um I think someone said it was um something fishy going on. Can you get that to me?
Uh, when Zim, they tried to do something, I don't have to explain myself.
Ah, so in other words.
I don't want to be rude, so.
You can make, you can make comments, but you don't want to explain, are you mad at him?
I don't have to.
No, you don't, but I'm ashamed of you.
Um, it's all right, knew that was going, be prepared for some records request.
Okay, that's all for, but they're doing.
Matter of fact, um I'd like to ask, for all the records requests that has been um.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'd like to uh, let me get my, things for you can uh.
Might as well do it now. Want every, every permit that Zim's pulled, want every permit that Jeremy Hells is pulled, I want the inspections.
Thomas Collins.
It's all recorded, it's all being recorded. I want all of Zim's inspections, I want all of Jeremy's inspections. I don't mind paying.
Right, um okay, what is your address?
You don't need none of that by law, you don't need my number, you don't need my I D, you don't need none, it's verbally, you know, here it's recorded.
That is, and I have requests, so I'll know who?
Thomas Collins.
Okay. Three, five, two.
Uh, three, five, two, two.
Okay, and you were like, okay, start off slow so I can.
Every permit that has been pulled since y'all took over the permits and every inspection that has been done. Whether it be concrete, electrical, um building, a building, um putting whatever. And then if, and they're saying against, and I'm not against anybody, if if you're all doing it legal, everything will be okay.
So uh every permit that has been issued, oh um, let's see, we're gonna be um. For, you said um Zim, Zim Patrick?
Zim and Jeremy Hells. Everyone, like anyone that has pulled permits since y'all took over. Every permit you have.
Okay, and um, okay, so we have, we have Zim Pa- uh Zim Patrick, Jeremy Hells.
Yes, ma'am.
Um you're gonna have to be specific, who else?
Um, every permit, I'm being specific, every permit since you took over.
It's a broadband, so they're.
They ain't been too many people that has been pulled permits besides, you know, we can do Brett too. Brett, mayor, if they pulled any.
What about me?
Um, pulling the permits.
Okay, so you want um, you just, you want the permits?
Every permit, she's pulled, Brett's pulled, Jeremy Hells is pulled.
Still pulling cargo.
And Zim.
Okay.
And any other ones?
Uh, who else, I mean, what else are you looking for?
The inspections, once the job is done, and the permits.
Okay. And uh, okay.
Anything else?
Let me talk to Ms. Belinda.
I was just asking, could you throw out my name?
Now you'll pick this up.
Y'all couldn't have jumped me or something, because y'all come back out of here.
It's a public building, you don't.
That don't matter, no, it don't. Because look at these grown men crowding me, they're crowding me and none of y'all like me anyways.
Hold on, we we we're holding up, doing our business here. We're trying to cut it out, justice here. She stopped everything here tonight so you can put this request in tonight.
She's the clerk.
But this is the, this is the time to do it.
Can you give me my space?
Put an email.
Can you please, can you please back off me?
No, sir, I'm not on here. Nobody's on, nobody's bothering.
I don't have to sign nothing.
Okay, that's fine.
She's, she's holding us all up doing our business.
I will call you with the invoice.
I want to email.
Um, no, I will either mail it to you or I'll call, since you don't.
I'll come pick it up.
Um, I'll call when the invoice is ready and then once I receive payment, I will start working on it. Now it could take, I I don't know when, um.
But you got thirty days by law, so.
Actually forty five, but um.
Okay, all right, fine with me, at a reasonable time, a reasonable.
Uh, yes, and I have.
I don't expect you to do it tomorrow or.
It's not going to happen.
I understand that.
Time.
At a reasonable time.
Have to figure out how many pages and so therefore, so we'll get, I'll, like I said, I'll be more than happy to get that for you, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I don't appreciate you or you who is driving behind me with your brights on, blinding me in Chiefland, following me. You're full of crap, man.
You're very hostile.
This ain't hostile. Because y'all have been attacking me around here.
Nobody doesn't.
Y'all are full of crap, man. Nah, you ain't getting rid of me, buddy.
I don't care about you.
I'm gonna stand right here.
Why are you hostile?
Why are you hostile?
I'm not hostile.
You're being hostile.
Can we finish putting our stuff off, please?
Go, I'm not stopping you.
Can you let us have our.
The building is closed now.
You got plenty of.
The building is closing.
This is an operational hours, the meeting is over.
Shut your mouth, buddy.
You need to stop being so hostile, Thomas.
Yeah, I want you to do that, I want you to do that, buddy.
Go, good night, good night, we're trying to close the buildings so everyone can go home.
I'm not stopping you.
Yes, you are. You're very hostile.
Y'all are going down.
You're very hostile.
Showing your ass.
Goodbye.
You ain't gonna do nothing.
You can leave.
Goodbye.
Why you so pale?
Goodbye.
Why are you being?
Come on, everybody go, good night.
I'm scared of none of y'all.
Good night.
Yeah, I live in LA.
So hostile, Thomas.
Because your husband, you ain't done nothing.
Kind of way.
That man.
You need to step off my way.
Listen.
You ain't gonna do nothing.
It's all this stupid.
Come on, buddy, I'm scared of you.
Two step, man.
I'm, you ain't worth going to jail for.
Both of you, this is stupid.